Close meeting of the Atwater City Council, March 14th, 2022 to order. Roll call.
Ambries?
Here.
Button is absent. Kale?
Here.
Raymond?
Present.
Creighton?
Here.
We have a quorum.
City Attorney report out from closed session.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council. Council considered one item of closed session as listed on the Page Two of the Agenda. Council received information, provided direction, and no reportable action.
Okay, today's invocation will be by Pastor Eddie Vargas and Pledge of Allegiance by Cory Billings, if you don't mind Cory. Please rise and remain standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You come to the plate. Thank you, Pastor. Welcome.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the opportunity. And anybody that would like to pray out loud with me or silently, show welcome to you. Father God, we always thank you, Father, that you give us this opportunity to come to you. Father, we pray for the leaders here, Father, councilmen, the councilwomen, that you would protect them, guide and direct them, their loved ones, our Chief of Police, the firemen, the police that we have here, all these men here, Father. We ask, Father, that you would guide and direct them. We love you, Lord, with all our hearts. Forgive us of our sins, guide and direct us, Lord, use us for your goodwill. So again, Father, we would ask these leaders that we have here, that you would protect them and their families, protect us, always guide us. We love you, Lord, with all our hearts. Please forgive us and take care of us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Subsequent need items.
Mayor, there are none.
Approval agenda is posted or amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Yes, sir.
Motion by Raymond, second by Kale.
Ambries?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Consent calendar.
Background information has been provided on all matters listed under consent calendar, and these items are considered to be routine. All items under consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Are there any members of the public that can forward regarding the consent item or any members of the council discussion or pull an item? Are there any members on Zoom with raised hand feature?
No, Mayor, there are not.
Okay. Thank you. Bye, guys. Thank you very much.
All right, Rich Miller, 334 Silva Drive, here in Atwater, also Pastor Victory Baptist Church, 1280 Sierra Vista Street. Wanted to see if number five and number seven just could get a clarification. Do you want me to ask my questions now or wait?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Five and seven. Any other members of the public? Any other members on Zoom with raised hand feature?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Any council comments? Seeing none. Looking for a direction on the consent with items five and seven being pulled for separate discussion.
I move to approve as amended.
I'll second.
Motion by Kale, second by Ambries.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton? Motion passes.
Item five, amending the city of Atwater qualification plan and adopting salary schedule D-22 effective March 17th, 2022. City Manager Waterman and Pastor, you can go back to the podium.
So for both of these, obviously, we'll just address number five, but-
Let me read seven if you want to do them both at the same time.
Okay.
Item seven, awarding general construction contract to Don's Mobile Glass for replacement of storefront windows at future City Hall building. City Manager Waterman, Public Works Director, Thompson.
Okay, so it was just clarification. I did read the documentation in the packet, and I was just hoping that you could, you all could clarify on number five. So in number five, it said that there's going to be a change in human resources, or there's going to be change in personnel and human resources in IT, and that with that change, that there, now there's going to be two positions in human resources and two in IT, if I understood it correctly. And that the salaries and the compensation for those positions would be absorbed into the budget for this year and then would be included in next year's budget. And I was just wanting to see if you could give a little bit more clarification on the purpose for these positions. So if before there were, there was one human resources person that was doing both of these jobs, was it just too much for them? Same with the IT, was it just too much for them? And because our city's expanding and growing, we need these other positions. And then with the number seven, I know that there, there was a call for bid, there were bids, there were only two bids, this was the lowest bid. And I understand what the work is for, but I was wondering if you could clarify once again, as a homeowner who just replaced the window in my house, forty thousand dollars sounds like a lot of glass. So if you could just give clarification, I know it wasn't just for windows, it sounded like it was for doors too, that, or, or windows indoors that had to be, you know, accessible for handicap accessibility. But if you could just give clarification so that we as the public know why it's going to be forty thousand dollars.
Okay, wait right there.
So, item five, we just recently had a resignation in our IT department, and we also received a resignation in our payroll department, which is encumbered in our HR. And so each time, and, and each time there is a absence or somebody leaves to, to fill another role, and, and our payroll person, the only reason why she's leaving is she'll be relocating. But when, when they, an employee does that, I have a responsibility and obligation to kind of look at the structure of the department, see what's working, see what's not. With payroll, it's very isolated. There is not always a backup person. There's typically one person. Everybody has so many jobs and tasks on their plate that it's hard to train or somebody as a backup for when that person leaves. So the restructuring of the department, how it's structured going forward, or how I'm proposing it be structured, will allow us to have two people that are able, if one is on vacation or sick or something happens, there is a backup for the payroll person because it's very specific on, on those tasks. And as far as the IT, there are a lot of projects that the city has moving forward, and with the new buildings that we're going to have, this will augment some of the, we all, we still have augmented IT services that help us. But this will reduce some of that role if, if we can find two people that, to fill that, that role. And that will allow us to have a staff person that can handle the data day operations or issues as they arise, as well as new projects coming forward.
Got you. And that makes sense. So really, with the fact that City Hall is moving, there, there's a need for that personnel as far as the IT, you know, just because it's going to require two people to be running between buildings, since this will be the police department and things like that. So the question, I guess, that, that I didn't hear an answer to, but I know you have an answer for, is, so this is going to be absorbed in this year's budget, and then next year it'll be budgeted in, is the way I read it in the documentation?
It, it will be, these positions. And again, how it's set up or restructured, it may be right now we have an HR analyst position as well as an HR technician. By restructuring it, we will be able to, some of those positions may not be filled, so that cost will be absorbed by that.
Got you. Great. And I know we've been in the black, so, you know, with all the hard work, so I didn't think it would be an issue, but I just wanted clarification because sometimes when you read the documents and it says, well, it's going to be absorbed, I just want to-
No, I appreciate the question. We always want to look at what we can do better.
Item seven, no.
Okay. Item seven is, and I'll let our Community Development Director talk on that, but again, what we have to consider, and the only thing I'll say on this is, that gets us all the time as government is prevailing wage. So I'll let you-
Not only the prevailing wage issue, but you have to understand, and you kind of touched on it, Pastor Miller, is that this is a pretty all-inclusive quote and proposal that was given back to the city. It does involve barrier removal, which is barrier or removal, excuse me, which deals with excess, the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA. It is the raising of the bar between where the energy levels were on the glass that's in that building now, which is very antiquated to what they have to meet by today's standards. Also, it's another very recognizable maneuver by this particular council in that they do early procurement on some of these things because it was anticipated that the steel and the glass and some of the other things, early procurement has saved us on projects before, and this is another very, very good example of that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Once again, like I said, the council's done a great job, the staff's done a great job fiscally. I just know, when I saw a number of forty thousand plus, I was like, wow, that's a lot of glass.
You're getting, you're getting a lot of bang for your buck on this one.
Right, right. So I appreciate the explanation and-
And Pastor Miller, if I might add, thank you for those questions because sometimes us in the dice don't really realize that it's not as transparent to the public. So thank you for that.
Council direction?
I move to approve of five and seven.
I'll second.
Motion by Kale, second by Ambries.
Raymond?
Yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Creighton?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'm going to take a two-minute resource recess. I have to leave. Mayor Pro Tem, Kale will take over. So, two-minute recess.
So Districts three and four are, are going to be up for election this November 2022 with the new districts. Districts one and two will be elected in 2024, and the mayor is elected in 2022. So federal law requires that we, that each district have about equal population. It, it also requires that we respect the Federal Voting Rights Act and that there's no racial gerrymandering. Under the California Voting Rights Act, we're required that the districts be geographically compact and that we recognize communities of interest and keep those communities together as best as possible. Other traditional principles are minimizing voters shifted to different election years. So minimizing voters that are moved from the 2022 election to 2024, or, or 2024 to over to 2022. Also, respect voters' choices and continue to be in office, and look at future population growth as development and, and all that occurs. It also requires that we preserve the core of the existing districts. This is your current existing districts, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And if you look at the deviation, is, is kind of where, where the concern is at, is that it, it's over the allowable, the allowable 10%. We always want to make sure that it's under that 10%. And if you look at ideal population, the ideal population for a, a district in your community is around eight, eight thousand, eight, eight thousand residents. So preeminent considerations, like, like I said, under the Federal Voting Rights Act, we are required that each district has an equal population, that we try to have a racial minority voice, that, that the districts be geographically contiguous districts. So that just means comp, compact and, and, and nice-looking lines. And also that, that we take all the, all the different objectives and measure objectively. Communities of interest, as, as you know, since we've talked about this before, are physical boundaries, natural, artificial barriers that we respect, roadways, rivers, railways, and also other, another way to identify a community of interest is any parks, schools, or other, other landmarks in your community. So what, I think we could skip this slide as well since I already touched bases on this. So what a community of interest is not, is, it's not incumbents' residence, residences. So it's not trying to protect electants or anything like that, and it also is not a political affiliation. So this, these are two considerations that we do not take into consideration when drawing these maps. So now we're going to go over the first draft map option, which is draft map, map option number one. And then, so this is the important part. So this, this, as you can see, is, is incorporating the 2020 census data and incorporate, and, and plugging it into the map option number one. As you can see, the total deviation is under the 10%. It's at 6.43. And if you look at the ideal population of 8,000, I think that we do a pretty good job of keeping that, these numbers pretty around that. So map option one retains the core of the existing divisions. I mean, it's shared, and it shifts fairly minimal along the borders. So a total of 1,966 people are accelerated from the 2024 voting cycle to the 2022 voting cycle. And I also believe that there's a, a, a minimal amount of, of voters that are deferred from the 2020 voting cycle to the 2024 voting cycle. I think it's 954. This is map option number two. So the total deviation on this map is 3%, and again, looking at the ideal population of 8,021, I, I think it's, it's, it's pretty much there as well with this map option. So the total deviation is way under the 10%. It's at 3.18%. Some, I think the total population that is deferred on this map is 2,801, are deferred from the 2022 voting cycle to the 2024 voting cycle. So that, under this option, the, the, the amount of voters that are shifted from, from, from voting this year, from voting in 2022 to 2024, it's 2,801. So that number is, is way higher, almost, I want to say almost three times higher than under map option number one. I mean, the total number of, of 731 residents are accelerated from the 2024 voting cycle to 2022. So when you open up the public hearing, we would really want to hear some, some comments on whether we, we did a good job keeping identifiable communities of interest together and respecting those neighborhoods, and also inform the public how they can participate. So we got our date, we got most of our information from demographic data from the 2020 census, from staff expertise, public input, and also council input. So the timeline and next steps, we can, we can skip to this, we can skip this slide, and I'll go over that on the next slide. So public hearing number one was held in February 14. We did public hearing number two, where we also went over the, we went over the law, we went over the same PowerPoint presentation. At this meeting, we're presenting the maps, and if the council has preferred a map, we will take that direction and then we'll come back and, and introduce an ordinance for finalizing on March the 28th. If, if the council has any feedback or anything on any other, other maps, we can tweak those maps as well, or if the public has any feedback. We can take those, those tweaks and present, we can present draft maps at, at public hearing number four. But we would be hoping to introduce an ordinance and finalizing the city council's decision at the next council meeting in order to meet the deadline of April 17. And that concludes my presentation. I, I can take any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Any council questions? Then I am going to open the, open the public hearing now. Are there any members of the public on Zoom that are currently using the raised hand feature that would like to speak at this public hearing? Janelle?
Our Pro Tem, we do have one, however, they're not using the raised hand feature, so I don't believe it's for this item.
It's for a different item.
I believe so because they're not using the raised hand feature at this time.
Okay. Are there any members of the public inside the chambers who would like to speak during the public hearing? If so, please come by the podium now.
All right, Rich Miller, I gave my address earlier. So I guess I was, I'd like to ask you for clarification on this. I know there's option one, option two. Is there a third option to keep the current districts? And if so, my follow-up to that would be the old saying, if it's not broke, why fix it? Has there been complaints about the old districts? I understand that California has guidelines we have to follow. I thought the old districts were within the margins. So if we don't need to change, why change, I guess? So if there hasn't been any, any kind of negative feedback about the districts and how they've been working, my thought is, don't change it. So I guess, once again, my first question would be, is, you know, is there a third option? Is the third option to stay with what we have? And if so, why would we change it?
We'll defer this over to our legal counsel.
Yeah, I could probably address that. It's more of a legal issue than anything. Every 10 years, California has, local government has to do, explore a redistricting process under the California Fair Maps Act. So technically, every 10 years, you are doing a redistrict. You could, if you redistrict, you could draw the, the same boundaries, but technically, just to be clear, you are, you do have to go through the redistricting process regardless. So, but to answer your question, which is a good one, have we considered a third map based on the existing boundary lines? We have, but the, what has changed since 2017 is 2017, we looked at the 2010 census data, and for this decennial census, we have to look at the 2020 census data. So when you overlay the 2020 census data as opposed to the 2010 census data with, overlay that with the existing boundary maps, one of the issues that pops up and goes against a United States Supreme Court decision is that a population deviation is above 10%. So you take the highest district with the highest amount of people in it, and you take the district with the lowest amount, and if that basically is more than 10% difference, you're going to have some issues, you're going to have presumptively some issues as far as case law goes from the Supreme Court. And that has only changed because of the new census data. So in light of that, you have to look at the boundaries to make sure you stay within those parameters. So I don't think there's been any complaints per se, but legally, it's, it's probably not the cleanest, I guess I would say.
Sorry, those are, let's just greet the public hearings again. Hearing now. Are there any raised hand features?
No, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, I'm a close public hearing now. I'll entertain a motion from the dice.
To be clear, Mayor and Council, there's no, we don't, there's no action that has to be taken, but you can give Henry from our office some direction on if you have a preference or leaning towards any particular map, and then, or, or any other tweaks or suggestions you may be interested in, and he can take that back. So we have come back with something that, that we think the council may like at the fourth hearing.
Any?
I guess my one comment would be just from, from the two maps being presented in today's presentation, right, right now, I'm kind of weighing towards map option one. It just seems like it's the cleaner, the cleaner map and easier with, with the boundaries, especially not, not only for us up here, but for the residents too. So they, it's a lot clearer that they understand what district they fall in.
Mr. Raymond, anything?
No, I was leaning towards map one, unless you want to move District two a few more blocks over, or map two, District two a few more blocks over. But I think my residents in District four would miss me.
I, I myself like this, number one, also because you don't have jettison areas, which makes it really tough on the, the people who live in that area who don't know who the councilman is. These are pretty much online, on the lines of the streets, and I, I believe that they're probably good things. probably good things.
Yeah, for what it's, for what it's worth, map option one is the most compact, and it actually looks, has more divisible quadrants, even as opposed to the existing map. So the, I think what you're describing is also referred to as compactness for purposes of drawing the map. So I think, you know, that's a good, good perspective on it. So what I'm hearing is a consensus that there's interest in, in bringing back something like map option one. Henry, did you get the direction you needed?
Yes, I did.
Great.
Then thank you.
Okay, then I'll close up number 10 and go to number 11. Adopting a resolution approving 2020 draft urban water management plan and, and water shortage contingency plan, public works and community development director, council.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and members of the council for your consideration of this item this evening. What you have before you, and I'm sure all of you just feverishly went through all 500-plus pages of the Urban Water Management Plan. It's exciting reading, but also a very, very important piece of what we do at a local level. The City of Atwater is a public water system, as you can imagine, with all the regulatory requirements that comes along with that. The state water agencies, including the Department of Water Resources, specifically the Department of Water Resources, requires an urban water management plan to be adopted every five years as part of the the regulatory compliance for our operation of that urban water system. This is an updated plan. If it seems extremely fresh, it's because it was only four to five short years ago that you adopted the last plan of its nature. It does now contain water supply contingency provisions in it and that are mandated by state law. Again, it's, it's a pretty voluminous record. If you have any questions, I'll do my best, but I do believe that we have a representative in the audience tonight from Blackwater, who was the consultant that prepared the document for us.
Hello, city council members and also the City of Atwater. My name is Val, and I work for Blackwater Consulting Engineers. I'm here today with Asia and also Allison to present to you the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan and also the Water Shortage Contingency Plan for the City of Atwater. I will start off with the first half of the presentation, and then Asia will finish off with the second half of the presentation.
It's not working. Okay, I'll do it for you.
Okay, all right. So the purpose of the Urban Water Management Plan is to ensure that there's enough water supply available to meet the city's future needs. Per the Urban Water Management Planning Act, this requires that an urban water supplier prepare and adopt this plan. An urban water supplier is defined as an agency that serves more than 3,000 connections or provide more than 3,000 acre feet of water per year. The City of Atwater falls into this category. This plan is required to be updated every five years in order for the city to qualify for state funding. Next, the plan goes over the city water system and supply sources. It characterizes the water usage and also provides a reliability analysis for a normal, dry, and a fire drought. This plan also identifies water conservation strategies. The, the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan consists of 10 chapters as shown on this slide. Here's the lay description of the plan. We will talk more about the other chapters in the following slide. Chapter two of the Urban Water Management Plan goes over the public coordination outreach. The city is required to coordinate with nearby agency and provide a written notification at least 60 days before this public hearing. The Merced County, the Merced Irrigation District, the Merced County of Farm Bureau, the Atwater Chamber of Commerce, the Atwater Elementary School District, and also the Merced Union High School District were sent letters to notify them about the public hearing today. The public was also given the opportunity to review the draft Urban Water Management Plan, and the public hearing today will provide the opportunities for the city's residents and employees to learn and ask questions about current and future water supplies. The city of, of the third chapter for the Urban Water Management Plan goes over the city's system. The current population for the City of Atwater is 31,638 people. In 2020, the city supplied approximately 8,559 acre feet of potable water to 8,407 connections. The land use for the City of Atwater comprised of residential, commercial, institutional, and also landscape irrigation. The fourth chapter of the Urban Water Management Plan goes over the city's water demand projections. In year 2020, the city used approximately 8,559 acre feet of potable water. A majority of this usage comes from residential. Here shows the water demand projection over the next two decades. This projection was based on the California Department of Finance and also the 2020 target of 254 gallons per day per capita. Now Asia will present the second half of the presentation.
Thank you, Val. All right, gets more exciting from here, I'm telling you. Senate Bill X77, also known as the Water Conservation Act of 2009, required that urban water suppliers reduce per capita water demands by 20% by the year 2020. Preparation of the Urban Water Management Plan is to document compliance with this requirement. Average water demands from 2000 to 2009 were analyzed to develop baseline demand of 317 gallons per capita per day. A 20% reduction would correspond to 254 gallons per capita per day. And based on evaluation of the data, an average water use of 241 gallons per capita per day was met in 2020. So congratulations to the City of Atwater community for meeting this, this target. So now the city is eligible to qualify for water grants or loans from the state. Good job. A critical component to analyzing water planning is to look at the water supply and its reliability. Currently, the city relies solely on groundwater, and future improvements to existing wells will ensure the reliability and will ensure the reliability of the water supply sources. The groundwater sources are assumed to be sufficient to meet demands in the future, especially as sustainable groundwater management plan activities occur. A new requirement of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan is a Water Shortage Contingency Plan. This is to be a standalone document included in the Urban Water Management Plan, and it provides details on how to proactively identify and respond to water shortages. Starting in July 2022, the city will be required to submit an annual water supply and demand assessment. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan describes the procedures for conducting this assessment, and these procedures include updating water demand projections and the water supply for the current year. If the supply is projected to be less than the water demand, shortage response actions will be recommended. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan is required to identify six standard shortage levels. The required six standard shortage waters levels are four percent water supply shortages, ranging from 10% to 50%, to greater than 50%. The Water Shortage Contingency Plan identified shortage response actions for each level, which are projected to reduce water demands to meet shortage conditions. As you can see in the table, response actions start out with education campaigns and prohibition of outdoor water-wasting activities for the lower levels with increasing water conservation requirements and landscape irrigation requirements. In addition to shortage response actions that are detailed in the Water Shortage Contingency Plan, the Urban Water Management Plan describes demand management measures, also known as water conservation measures, which have been implemented or supported by the city. These include water waste prohibition, which is part of the Water Conservation Ordinance, installation of water meters, conservation pricing, meaning that user payers, users pay more for increased water use, public information programs in school education, and providing water survey program or audit upon request by residents. Enforcement of plumbing efficiency standards are done through the city building department, and although there are no rebates offered by the city for high-efficiency washing machines, these are typically offered through electrical utility companies historically, like PG&E and MID. So tonight, we're having the public hearing to receive comments on the Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan. Notices were issued to agencies, as Val described, on February 22nd, stating that the city was updating the Urban Water Management Plan and that it was available for public review. Two notices in the newspapers were also published in public circulations. And so tonight, once we receive comments, we would incorporate anything from staff, council, or the public into the final document, and those will be submitted to the Department of Water Resources within 30 days, and then it will be sent to the California State Library for public review at any time. So at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions, along with Allison or Val. Happy Pi Day.
Any questions from the DICE? Any questions from the DICE? Okay, I'll open this up with public hearing. Are there any members of the public on Zoom that are currently using the raise hand feature that would like to speak during this public hearing? Janelle?
No, Mayor Protem, there is not.
Are there any members in the, of the public inside the chambers that would like to speak during the public hearing? If so, please welcome podium. Hearing none, I'll go back around. Are there any members on Zoom with the raised hand features?
No, Mayor Protem, there is not.
And any members of the public that wishes to come up? Do so now. Hearing none, I'll close the public comment. Bring it back to the DICE. What would you guys like to do?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation as presented.
Second. I have a motion from Ambries and a second from Raymond. We'll pass the vote.
Ambries?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Cale?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. And on the same line, verbal draft, drought, city manager, what, public works and community development director, council. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, and I checked out one off, I'm sorry. Let's go back to item 12 then. This is a raising of the first reading and introducing an ordinance of the city council adopting a military equipment use policy and adding said policy to the Atwater Police Department Policy Manual, chief, are you buying a change?
No.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Michael Salvatore, your police chief. The city council has had a longstanding commitment to the police department to provide the necessary safety equipment, and has always been real supportive of the police department. We do appreciate that. As part of recent police reform legislation coming out of Sacramento on the 1st of January, Assembly Bill 41 was codified in Government Code Sections 7070 and through 7075, requiring law enforcement agencies to obtain approval from their applicable governing bodies via the adoption of a military equipment use policy by ordinance prior to a law enforcement agency funding, acquiring, or using military equipment. Now, when you hear the term military equipment, you think of what you just talked about. Chief, do you have tanks? Do you have armored personnel carriers? Do you have those, that type of equipment? The answer to that question is no. But this assembly bill lists a laundry list of equipment that has now been classified as military equipment. Things like drones. That is classified as military equipment now under this section, whether they're used by police officers at all. Our rifles that we carry as officer safety gear inside our patrol cars, that is now classified as military equipment pursuant to this statute. If we had a command post vehicle, that is classified as military equipment pursuant to this statute. These types of devices, even though you wouldn't think that they're military equipment, we have to be cognizant of the fact that under this current statute now, they are. And the department in the city is now required to have a standing military equipment use policy in the police department's general order book. Anytime we acquire, excuse me, equipment of this nature, before we take delivery of it or purchase it, I must appear before the council. I must state the reason why we need the equipment. I must state the reason, where the money is coming from. I need to get the council's approval to purchase the equipment prior to taking delivery or making the purchase itself. There is significant reporting requirements and public hearing requirements once a year that we will be in front of the council, in front of the community, basically giving you our inventory, and how much we purchased, if we purchased, do we need to purchase, and how it's used. This policy also covers allied agencies working within the City of Atwater. And if you read our policy, we have a blanket generic authorization for, like, the Sheriff's Department to come into the City of Atwater on mutual aid, or the task force, Brian, where their equipment could be considered military equipment under this policy, even though we don't own it. So all the jurisdictions in the state of California are currently going through this process, all of us together. The listserv on the chief's website was about 50 deep. We're all trying to struggle with what this actually means and how this applies, and we have a May 1 deadline that we have to comply with, or I have to take all the military equipment that is considered under this code section out of patrol cars. Well, to me, that's unacceptable. So we are here to take public comment tonight. Our policy has provisions in it that allow for mutual aid and outside agencies to come into the City of Atwater with their equipment as long as they have acceptable AB 481 ordinances on their books. We have several different items that qualify under this section. We have a provision in it that allows me to replenish stock up to 50% of the current total listed in the policy without the approval of the council. Because if I buy ammunition for our rifles over a certain amount, I will have to get your permission to do so prior to making the purchase. So this item has been reviewed. The city attorney and I have worked on this policy. This policy, by law, had to be up on our website for 30 days prior to this council meeting. We did comply with that. That, the draft policy is on our website, it's been there since the first part of February. We expect to have a public meeting pursuant to the law every year in January where we go over our policy, and it's a separate than a council meeting. It is an actual agendized Brown Act meeting just for this. I've designated one of our sergeants as the military equipment coordinator. He will be in charge of making sure that we are in compliance with the law, do all the proper reporting, and do our public meeting that we'll have to hold every year. This is the first reading of the ordinance. We'll be back before you in two weeks for a second reading and adoption of the ordinance. Takes effect 30 days after that, which places us right in compliance with the law, May 1st. And And I will take any questions if you have them.
Any questions from the diocese? Hearing none, I will open this to public hearing. Are there any members of the public on Zoom that are currently using the raised hand feature that would like to speak during this public hearing? Do you know?
No, Protem.
I got you. It's easy for you to say.
Right there.
Are there any members of the public inside the chambers who would like to speak during the public hearing? If so, please approach the podium now. Seeing none, I'll go back around. Are there anybody with a raised hand feature on Zoom?
No, there is not.
Are there any members of the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close with public comment and look to the diocese direction.
Real quick, Chief, because you've been the biggest supporter of law enforcement up here for a long time, and I also do not support the militarization of law enforcement. So I think you did a great job of explaining that and what needs to happen, and it just shows the more hoops you guys have to run through just to do your job in the state of California and in other progressive places. So thank you for that report.
You're welcome.
And motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance CS 1045, adopting a military equipment use policy and adding said policy to the Atwater Police Department Policy Manual.
Second.
I have a motion by Raymond, a second by Ambries. We'll cast a vote.
Ambries?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Kale?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now can we move on? Now we can move on to the verbal drought update, since we already had the weather update up to the drought.
Well, they're kind of one in the same. First, I'd like, on behalf of the City Manager and Public Works slash Community Development Department, to thank our friends at Blackwater for the excellent work that they've done this year with the preparation of our report and the presentations that you guys came and delivered to the council. I think you saw, and incidentally, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the presentation, you guys are free to go home. I know you've got a little bit of a drive in front of you. So pursuant to the provisions that was mentioned in the presentation about the law regarding water shortages and be able to plan for ample supply, I wanted to let the council know, at the request of the City Manager, that staff is going to come back to you with a more comprehensive report on the drought conditions. They are present. They are serious in the state of California, so much so that we're adopting new legislation to ensure supply. But we have to make sure that the report that we give back to the council is a balanced report, which is, we all know that the county of Merced, the lifeblood, the economic engine for the county of Merced is agriculture. So we have to be prepared to deal with the needs of our community from both angles, both from a water supply perspective and how we are going to provide for that water supply, but also the economic impacts of our area once agriculture is impacted, water supply is impacted, and that is going to be something that we have to deal with from an economic standpoint for longer than just the current hydrological cycle. So that is something that was an in-depth conversation that City Manager and I had today. She's asked that we prepare a more in-depth report, talk to you a little bit about the values of water supply on agriculture, how that impacts, from an economics perspective, how much that impacts the city of Atwater, and what we're doing about, in addition to what our representatives from Blackwater recommended and how well we're meeting those goals, but what we need to be prepared for. That was the extent of what I have. Available to answer any of the questions, but I would ask that we kind of look forward to the more in-depth report that we'll be bringing forward.
Any questions to take from the diocese? I have mine, Gray. So just a quick overview, or maybe the Blackwater people can answer this question. Are we worse off than we were last year?
Yes.
Is it going to affect our citizens?
Already is.
In a worse way? So then my statement will be for the citizens of Atwater, get ready. If you haven't turned your sprinklers off in your, because I refuse. My wife is like, we need to turn the sprinklers on. I've said, no, we can't, not yet, not until we get these water reports. So just warn everybody, don't raise yourself, because it does look very, very bad.
I think it, you're absolutely right, Mayor Protem, and I think it is going to be a much more serious year. I think we need to start looking towards some of the implementation programs that our folks here had discussed with water-saving appliances and everything else. The relationships that they talked about with the other agencies, such as the Merced Irrigation District and some of these other public agencies, we've already began much more comprehensive conversations with them, other than just the notifications that we need to give under our plan and our report.
Okay, great. So stay tuned to the station. And Chief, I'm sure that you'll have a comprehensive plan on how they catch those individuals out there watering too much, right?
Look, I don't want them getting in a fight over sprinklers either. You may have to show up over at John Town.
Yeah.
That would be for the best of the servants.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gray. Next is the Police Department and 2021 Annual Report, Chief Salvadori.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of the council, members of the Atwater community, Mike Salvatore, your police chief. And I want to open with, it's been a privilege and honor to be your police chief for the last three years. Can you believe it? It's been three years. It has been. Calendar year 2021 was a year like any, unlike any other. Change continues to be the dominant theme. Your department has met challenges presented to it in 2021, delivered an elevated level of service. But we've only just begun. After completing my third year of service, I feel that together we've accomplished a significant amount despite the challenges presented, and 2022 will be a year unlike any other, again, a year of change, a year of challenge, and a year of celebration as the city turns 100. The department is poised to adapt to the changes in the criminal justice environment. The primary goal for 2022 is to continue to improve the Atwater Police Department and meet the challenges of a new year. In doing that, let me, before we go to the budget slide, the Atwater Police Department is a full-service police agency. It's running at minimum staffing levels, and in this year of police reform, change is going to be the one thing that will be constant. So how we navigate that change and how we get to where we want to be is going to be a significant issue for us. So let's talk about the budget first. Our budget is in six different funds in the city's budget. It's, we consume, we are a revenue consumer. We are not a revenue generator. And out of that, we consume $8.3 million. Police Department is the largest piece of the general fund. It's 35% of your general fund, and it's split up into three basic categories. 72% of our money, 70 cents on every dollar we spend comes out of the general fund. 19 cents out of every dollar comes out of what a lot of people like to refer to as Measure H. Measure H is the Public Safety Transactions and Use Tax. Approved by the voters in 2013, and we have a looming issue coming. It expires June 30th of 2023. So if we do nothing, we lose 19 cents on every dollar the police department spends on that date. The last 9 cents out of every dollar that the department uses comes from a variety of different revenue sources. The largest one of those others being the Community Facilities Districts around the Buac Colony High School, and that's in your district, council. For this current fiscal year, the department is funded for 25 sworn officers, and I break them down by how they are funded. That's a very, very important thing, because a hiccup in any one of these funds negatively affects the department's ability to provide service. 13 of the 25 are in non-subvented general fund. What that means is it is the base general fund money. It isn't being provided by any other source. You go to Target and you pay the sales tax, that's part of the general fund, and that's where that is. Seven positions are part of the Public Safety Use and Transactions Tax. That's that half cent sales tax that you pay on top of the normal sales tax here in Those positions, as you can tell, are about just a little under a third of the police department, and it's tied to that money. If that money isn't there, those positions aren't there. Three positions are in our Community Facilities District. Two of our positions are subvented general fund. What that means is we are billing someone out of the general fund to pay for these positions. That money comes into the general fund, but if that revenue source goes away, those positions are also at risk. Those are our school resource officer positions at Buac Colony and Atwater High School. We have 10 non-sworn positions. Six of them are in our communications, or five of them are in our communications center. We have two CSOs that do animal control and evidence and help with code enforcement. We have a code enforcement manager and a records manager that the council approved when I consolidated positions. When it comes to our staffing levels, one of the things that our recent surveys talked about was providing sufficient numbers of personnel for the purposes of performing the service. Our current officer-to-1,000 population ratio is .86 per thousand or per capita. When you look at national standards, the FBI splits the country up into four zones. We're in the Pacific Zone, West Coast Zone, and usually that has a lower ratio than some of the East Coast areas in the Midwest. Our average on the West Coast is 1.2 officers per thousand. For the city to get to that goal, as you can see, it's a significant investment in resources. We would need eight officers, more than what we have right now, to make that happen. That is a significant resource allotment. Next slide. This is our staffing level, and when we talk about our organizational chart, when we talk about that, we plug in our 25, we subtract four openings. The department currently has four unfilled positions. At the time that I wrote the report and published the report, we only had two. Over the last 60 days, we've opened up two more positions. We run basically with a chief of police, a lieutenant, five sergeants. Those five sergeants cover the four patrol shifts and investigations. We have an administrative supervisor, and we have a code enforcement unit with a code enforcement manager. And then basically, we have patrol shifts. I have one detective assigned to investigations with a sergeant. I should have three to four. Our patrol shifts, if everybody shows up to work that day, we have three patrol officers plus the sergeant. But when you're missing four positions and they're vacant, we don't cover that unless we have overtime involved in that coverage. Again, another resource consumer. The other thing you'll notice about this staffing level or this staffing chart is that you either work patrol or you work detectives. And detectives openings are hard to find. We don't have a SWAT team. We don't have a K-90 team. We don't have a person on the task force. We don't have those because we just don't have the resources to staff those types of positions. And that's a great disadvantage when it comes to recruitment and retention and getting people to come to Atwater. The current measure would basically, if we lost the funding in the current measure, it would decimate this. We are at basically the minimum staffing to handle our calls for service, respond to emergencies, take care of the base job. There isn't the resources to go beyond the base job. And that's important, because that is one of the things the recent community survey talked about, was investigating violent crime, responding to those types of things, training. You send a couple of guys to training, and it makes the, makes the schedule pretty interesting. And chiefs of police get to handle crime reports. So next slide. We handle anywhere between, in 2019, we handled 29,000 calls for service. The pandemic in 2020 basically took that and cut it by a very large margin. We're starting to see the effects of the recovery from the pandemic. We're back up to 24,000 calls for service. It's a 5% increase over last year, and there's a lot of reasons for this increase. I've got, I've got three of them listed here. The issues with homelessness is a big driver for calls for service these days. As the pandemic, we get the recovery from the pandemic, we're seeing a lot more mental health issues than we always saw before. And then, of course, in 2020, all the schools were out, so all the resource officer contracts were disbanded. We left the schools. Those calls for service went with them. We're now back in the schools, and those calls for service are now coming back. Thank you. With the increased calls for service, of course, there's going to be an increase in crime statistics to go with them. We had a 21, 21% increase in total UCR. What UCR is, is Uniform Crime Report. It is a reporting system to the Department of Justice and the FBI, and that tracks agencies nationwide. This will be the last year that you see statistics in this manner. The Uniform Crime Reporting System is obsolete. It is going away. It's being replaced by the Incident-Based Reporting System. We converted to Incident-Based Reporting in February. Our new statistics for next year will be all Incident-Based Reports, and I guarantee you that these numbers will explode, because this is based around six general crime classifications. The new reporting system is based on 54. Traffic accident statistics. We did have a small increase in traffic accident statistics over last year, about 3.5%. We still average a traffic accident a day in the city. That has not changed. What is, what is a positive number, though, is our injury vehicle accidents have decreased over time. With increased traffic enforcement, we dropped 14.3% in a year, and that is even with people returning back to the streets after being gone for COVID. At the end of this year, we deployed our part-time motorcycle officer for the first time, and that had a dramatic impact in October, November, and December. But we don't have the resources to put him out there full time. This slide talks about our school resource officer program. We're under contract for both high schools. It was a community survey focus where we talked about keeping kids out of trouble and keeping them out of gangs and preventing juvenile crime. Our two officers do those six things. They handle all criminal investigations at these schools while they're in progress. They're out and about in the schools where there's outreach to children. They're at sporting events. They're at other district events, and they provide a very, very needed traffic support keys at these schools, both before and after school. And they were one of our first responders for our vehicle versus ped accident here a couple of weeks ago out in front of Buhat. Next slide. When we talk about code enforcement, again, that goes right to the heart of our community survey. When we talk about displaced citizens or homeless, we track probably 21 to 30 individual sites throughout the city over the last year. Our code enforcement unit handles over 3,000 calls for service. We have over 200 enforcement actions. We have a 90% compliance rate, which is really, really good. One of the things a lot of people talk to me about is abandoned vehicles. I get those calls all the time. We handled 360 abandoned vehicle calls last year. We abated 32 cars. We're number one in county percent for vehicle abatement. Then animal control, that issue has really increased over last year. We went from like a call, call and a half a day to almost three. Next slide. So, when you hired me in 2019, I came to you, one of my first council meetings, and said, hey, look, I'm your new chief. I have this strategic plan. Three years, I want to handle, I want to take care of a certain set of priorities. Well, we're at the end of three years. So how'd we do? The plan's 90% complete. Over the years, we've dealt with fleet issues. If we didn't have the ballot measure, we wouldn't have been able to deal with those issues. There is a significant portion of the fleet replacement program in the ballot. We reorganized the department. Council generously and the city manager generously gave me a second in command. We were able to hire that second in command. He's in the training process now. We have a sergeant on every shift. So supervision, department supervision is greatly enhanced. Our radios are up to date. Our equipment is up to date, and we're now into maintenance mode with that. Last year, the staff and I took our own workspace. And with some cost savings and some very fortuitous deployment pieces with a piece of equipment that we had that released some money, we were able to improve the work area. We took care of the evidence room. It has been reconstructed. If you've been behind the walls, we changed the floors. I got the duct tape off the floors. And we reallocated some workspace, put some new furniture in, make the workspace more functional. We deployed a new high-tech 911 system, part of the technology piece, paid for by the state of California, in which we can now take text messages as 911 calls. Next slide, please. So, what's in store for 2022? Recruitment and retention is going to be key. The baby boomers are leaving the business. We are now in a highly competitive environment. Our competitors are doing a myriad of things to try to take what qualified candidates are out there that want to do the job and try to entice them. We have to be no different, but we need the resources to make that happen. We need a fully-staffed investigative unit. Right now, we are basically doing crimes against persons, major crimes against persons, and not much else from investigations. And it is time to start a new strategic planning process. There are things that still need to be done. The easy things have been. Now we have some hard things to do. We're going to expand our technology footprint. Body worn cameras have now become as important, if not more than important, than body armor. Our system is at its maximum now. We're going to need to expand it. I'll be in front of the council at budget year to do that. We also are going to leverage some MCAG money for e-citations to keep our, to speed our officers up on traffic stops to make them more available. We will need the resources for that, too. And then finally, last but not least, we're trying to take what the community has told us in these surveys and implement them. A lot of the stuff, we've done a decent job getting our foot out and start walking, but now it's time for the resources to finish the job. And then law enforcement reform is ever-changing. Things like doing your own internal affairs investigations are going to become a thing of the past. You're not going to be able to do them. That is going to require resources. There will be certain investigations where the state will come in and oversee them and take our autonomy away from us in them. The rules and regulations regarding those are still to be made. I'm heavily engaged in that process as part of Cal Chiefs. And it's going to be an interesting year. I'll be in Foster City on Friday. We have 53 pages of new bills to go, all related to law enforcement, law enforcement reform, Proposition 47, the effects of sentencing, that whole gambit. So with that, that concludes my annual report. We're holding on. We're at minimum staffing. We need the community's support. This is a supportive community. We need the resources to finish the job, and I'll take questions if you have.
Any question from the dice? Okay, none. I guess not, geez. I don't really have anything either. Any questions from the public? We'll go ahead and open that up to the public and see what they have to give you. There are none?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on. Number 15, raving, a first reading and introducing an ordinance of the city council amending section 8.16 solid waste recyclables and organic waste collection of title aid to health and safety of the Atwater municipal code. Have a spoken, community development director, introduction.
So I don't have anything as sexy as the police report or tanks or weapons. I'd like to talk to you guys tonight a little bit about garbage. That's kind of cool. You know, you really think about it. So I don't know how familiar the council has made yourselves on some of the Senate bills that have passed over the last several years. Back in 2016, the state introduced new legislation on short-lived climate pollutants and the control of those pollutants. One of the heavy hitters in that group was methane. So it, of course, went after the agricultural community, but organic waste in landfills also creates methane. So it began the long legislative process of implementing new programs to industry, to the ag community, to municipalities. What you're seeing tonight is a required amendment to our municipal code. What we're doing is asking for an ordinance to amend the municipal code for the city of Atwater to introduce, start introducing changes that we're going to be needing to implement to our collection system and to the way we manage organic waste. This is, the introduction of this new material is overseen by our legal team and is, we are as cities in the Merced County area, under guidance and assistance from the Solid Waste Management Authority under MCAG as well. So basically, this is another mandatory, I get to bring you guys a lot of stuff on stuff we have to do from the state, but on top of that, this is actually good legislation that allows for the removal of organic waste from our systems and the collection and the composting of those materials and their reuse through recycling. So we're very much in favor of this. Also available to answer any questions if you have any.
What's the cost to the ratepayer going to be?
Well, that's an interesting question, Councilman Raymond, and we're looking at it from both angles. I know one of the first questions we get is, does it make sense to have another can at the curb? You know, for that kind of collection? And the short answer is, it may not. Sorting and segregating the waste at the solid waste authority may end up being a more viable option, and what we're doing is looking into both to see the one that impacts the ratepayer the least.
Yeah, I would just add that those are all going to be things that the staff and everyone's going to have to look at. This ordinance, just to be clear, doesn't touch the rates. This gets us on the books in compliance with CalRecycle, who's the state regulator. Any changes that would go into effect as far as implementation would be in January of 2023.
Yes, it's the start of the state affecting the ratepayers again.
Correct.
Any, anybody else here? Any comments from the public on this item? Yes, Mr. Billings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I have a question. We currently have the recycling of green waste going on, which is mandatory by the state. What is a city are we doing to make sure that our provider is actually providing that service and not picking up the green waste and dumping it with the regular trash?
The oversight of the contract administration? Okay, I was just going to say that it's administered at Public Works, and we're having, at the request of the council and the city manager, we're having increased dialogues with our provider to ensure contract compliance.
And I've, Councilman Raymond and I have had multiple conversations of that. It is a severe problem in our community. Our providers are picking up the green waste with the trash and putting it in the same trash cans. I've told Brian multiple times, it is happening in my neighborhood on a weekly basis. We have one truck come through, and he picks up both cans and dumps it into the container. Brian's asked me to grab pictures. Unfortunately, I'm not generally home when they come in to grab those pictures, but if we're going to be forced into some form of compliance, then we need to force our provider to actually provide the service we're paying for.
And in response to that, Corey, I mean, I get the dilemma, and there are a few bad actors out there that we're always on guard with, but those service providers are under the same regulation that the cities are now. So the non-compliance with those issues are pretty steep. I don't know that we're going to have an issue with that. That may be a self-correcting thing, but I'll defer to the city manager on any comments she'd like to make.
Thank you for that information.
Anybody else in the public wish to comment or question? There are none? Okay. I'm sorry?
Would we be addressing this issue again?
No, if you'd like to address this issue.
I mean, down the road, since he doesn't have all the answers right now. I mean, I feel that we do need a recycling, but I don't think we should have to pay for it. I think that it should, you guys are recycling it, then you get the money from the state by, like in any other city, because I think that we are just wasting a lot of, I'm amazed that there's no, I've been here three years, and I'm like, wow, still no recycling. And there's only one recycling place in Atwater, I meant there's one in Winton, two, unless there's something else. But will this be addressed again or down the road?
As further code changes are required, each and every one of those will be brought in front of the council, and we will be offering a public hearing for each and every one of those, and they will be noticed.
Okay, so you said something about January, so that...
Yeah, I was just saying that the implementation of this ordinance will not be till January.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that there won't be any further discussions at the council.
And just so we're clear, that we're addressing different types of recycling. There are different kinds of recycling, and some of the provisions for SB 1383 are not driven towards metal and aluminum recycling, they're towards organic waste recycling.
But wouldn't you make money if you did metal and aluminum? I mean, for the city, I mean, that's...
I don't believe the city makes much on aluminum or metal recycling as well as, I mean, the general public does. We have, we implement recycling as part of our ongoing processes anyway. I mean, can recovery, those different things, metal recycling, things of those nature is part of our operational programs. But the metal recycling, what the basis of this bill is and the focus of this hearing is on organic waste recycling. I just want to make sure.
But you wouldn't make money off of the other.
Actually, the studies I've seen is the cities that actually go out and recycle aluminum and corrugated material and plastics do not make money as much as it costs.
Oh, really?
You do not make it. It costs a lot for a company like Republic to add another run around to grab just those containers of recycling. And then one of the drawbacks that I saw was the people who are adamant about it do their own recycling, so they get the money and the city doesn't. So that, it really has shown that it's not very profitable.
I feel that they're true, it's true that the people do do it, but if it was, if we had a can, I think that that would change, it would, people would get a catch on to it, my personal opinion.
Well, you know, I know it's a different topic than what this one is right here, but to what you're saying, in, I think it's 2013, the contract was signed with Republic, and the city had to request the recycling can within a year, and no one ever did that. And so now it would be a charge to the ratepayer to even have one out there. I think we did a study a few years ago on this topic. Were you city manager that time? Okay, so this has been quite a while. I've been up here way too long. It's been a number of years, but there was issues a long time ago, so before even I was on the council, but it was, the city had a year to make that claim, they didn't. And now we're getting ready to look at the garbage contracts again, I believe, ten-year deal.
Ma'am, can we get your name for the record so that we can reach out to you?
This is my first time. Elfrida Peggins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. I look for a motion.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation as presented.
Before anything's decided, this comes back, right? This is just starting the process?
Yeah, first we...
Yeah, okay. I'll say it.
We have a motion by Embry, second by Raymond, across our vote.
Raymond?
Why do I keep going first?
I only have two to switch between.
I think Councilman Ambries feels left out, yes.
Ambries?
Yes.
Kale?
Why do I always say that? Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, public comment?
At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and replaced on a future agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Okay, I'm going to open the public comments now. Are there any members of the public on the zoom that are currently using the raised hand features enough?
No, Mayor Protem, there is not.
Do we have any public cards?
Yes, Mayor Protem, we do have one.
Let's start with the public cards first.
We have Scott Borba.
Mr. Borba.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Scott Borba and my wife, Janine, and our family have lived in Atwater since 2001. We live on Chardonnay Way. In 2012, we bought our house on Chardonnay off of Fruitland Avenue and have lived there since. I want to first recognize all of you and the efforts you've put in restoring our city budget and welcoming new businesses to Atwater over the past decade. Public work is often thankless work, so thank you. The past two years have been difficult for all of us. I think most of us would agree that our federal and state governments have burned many of us with numerous inconveniences these past two years. Unfortunately, too many inconveniences can push even the most quiet citizens to speak up. In the 10 years living on Chardonnay, I don't believe I could remember one where Fruitland Avenue would be considered well-maintained. This past year, of course, we haven't even had a road. This proved to be a minor inconvenience initially, but as I mentioned before, too many of these inconveniences tend to compound. This inconvenience costs every Atwater High School family, student, or anybody that goes to church, like I do at The Hope, approximately $200 more in gas each year to drive the 2.4-mile round-trip detour opposed to the 0.8-mile direct route. Additionally, increased traffic on Fifth Street and Elmer Wood parking issues on Valencia Way pose a risk to the public safety of our neighbors. So I'd like to urge the council to please accelerate the work on this project and finish this job. Continue your track record of doing what's best for your citizens, finish Fruitland, and let's keep this momentum of returning to normal going. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor Protem, I do not have any more.
Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak?
All right, once again, Rich Miller, 334 Silva Drive here in Atwater, also Pastor Victory Baptist Church on 1280 Sierra Vista Street. Normally, I don't get up during public comment and say anything that might be considered partisan, but today, there was an assembly bill in our state assembly, it's 1638, that was brought before the California State Assembly to try to fast, to be fast-tracked so that the gas tax could be suspended and sort of relieve Californians of 50 cents a gallon tax while we see this hike in, in prices. And unfortunately, it ended up being a partisan issue. It was brought before the assembly by Republicans, and it was only voted for to be fast-tracked by Republicans. There wasn't one Democratic representative who voted for it, including our assembly member, who I actually have gotten to know, and I don't believe he was in attendance, but I don't know for sure. And I'm disappointed that nobody in our state assembly would see the need to try to relieve the residents of California of 50 cents a gallon to help out as we have probably the highest prices in fuel in the United States. With that being said, I do believe that we should call, and everyone in the state should call their assembly member and encourage them to help get this assembly bill passed. Once again, 1638 is the assembly bill number, so that this could be moved on and Californians could see the gas tax suspended temporarily. And if you look into it, we actually have the surplus to continue the road projects going, so it wouldn't stop the road projects at all. But I feel that this has become a partisan thing because, once again, in politics, people want to take credit instead of working together, and I'm glad that our council hasn't done that and you all have worked together. And with that, in closing, I just want to share an illustration that I shared with the people at our church yesterday morning. There was a Republican senator from the state of California by the name of Mark Hatfield, who served years ago, and he was visiting Calcutta, and he was touring Calcutta with Mother Teresa, and he went to the place that was known as the House of the Dying. It was where sick children were cared for in their last days and the dispensary where the poor lined up by the hundreds to receive medical attention. And as he looked at all that Mother Teresa and her helpers did and how they fed and nursed those who were left behind to suffer, he asked her this question. He said, "Mother Teresa, with all due respect, don't you feel like a failure?" And he went on to clarify, he said, "There's a sea of poverty outside your doors. You can't possibly succeed in helping all the people in Calcutta." And she ended, she responded this way, "My dear senator, God did not call me to be successful. He called me to be faithful." So thank you for being faithful, and let's just continue to stay the course.
Thank you, sir. Any others wish to come forward and speak their piece? She or none? I'll go back around. Are there any other raised hand features on Zoom?
No, Mayor Protem, there is not.
We have Chief Arusha wishes to speak.
Close enough. Bobby, you're Atwater City Fire Battalion Chief. I just appreciate the opportunity to be up here and address you this evening, Mayor Protem and council. Recently, we had a longtime city of Atwater employee and retired CalFire captain pass away, so I was just going to read a brief excerpt. On March 10th, 2022, retired fire captain Robert Blaze passed away after a battle with cancer. In September of 95, Robert began his career working for the United States Forest Service. Robert started as a firefighter for the city of Atwater, and then in 2008, when the contract came over, Robert became a fire captain with CalFire. He continued serving the citizens of Atwater and Merced County. In April of 2015, he was named 2014 Firefighter of the Year. Throughout his career, he was involved in many programs such as grant writing, EMS, and training various, in various different departments. Away from the workplace, Robert was an instructor for Merced College Fire Academy, and he retired from CalFire in 2017. We will be having services, or they will be having services Friday at 12 o'clock at the community center, 760 East Bellevue. Please join city council and myself in keeping his loved ones in your thoughts and prayers.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make any comments? Do you know? She or none? Then I'll go to city council comments. You guys are going to fight if I say which one goes first, so you decide.
I have no comments tonight.
Nope, he goes first.
First, Chief Bobby. I know how to say your last name, too. I'm glad you said something, because I was going to say a little something about Robert, and so it's better coming from you than me, but it is sad. I know he's battled things for quite a while, and so it's unfortunate, but may he rest in glory. So, place we all want to be. And also, I just want to mention Dave Sargentson, who's a friend of most of us, lost his father recently, so just want to keep them, the family, in thoughts and prayers. Now, onto something I enjoy, is watching Pastor Miller get ready to get up and speak. It's like, like a puppy getting ready to go on a trip. And so it's fun, but no, thank you so much for always being so uplifting and positive. It's, it's a good change, and it's good to see new faces in here, you know, than the usual crew, so, in fact, I mean, because I've known Jeff forever, but most of the time, it's the same people, so it's good to see new faces. We like that.
Okay. Chief Bobby, excuse me. I've got a lot of things going on in my head. I like trying to make sure I don't screw anything else up, but I have a couple of things. I have to please be careful on Thursday, be safe, enjoy us on St. Patrick's Day. It's the day of heritage for the mayor and my families. And please don't drink and drive drunk. I always remember the Irish proverb that say, that always said, "Do not resent growing old." Many have been denied this privilege. So for St. Patrick's Day, that's my thing. Don't forget about the 1880s baseball game, All-Star Baseball Game, on April 16th at Memorial Ballpark. Tickets are on sale for only $5 for the game, and they're already starting to go fast. You can get ahold of Tom Lake at the Veterans Center, the Castle Veterans Organization, or you can get them from me. And then on Wednesday, we'll be working with a bunch of group of people to get the city of Atwater's main buildings cleaned up, and we are calling this the Centennial Restoration Committee. And on Wednesday, we gathered a bunch of information and we're going to get that information together and get going. Danny Ambries and I are sitting on this committee, and we look at making Atwater beautiful. Other than that, thank you all for attending. I'll see you guys in church on Sunday. Thank you for bringing that up, and I'll adjourn for the evening. In honor of Robert Blaze, we adjourn. In honor of Robert Blaze, we adjourn.